One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That's okay. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. We're running a couple of minutes late and I'm hoping that we'll be able to catch up. But it is 11:15 and we have a very important presentation this morning on our mid-year budget and some recommendations for BA lanes and substitute pay. Dr. Brabran, do you want to introduce Ms. Burden or are we going to just hand over the show?
Well, we have a great group this morning. We have a medley of topics to go over. We're going to do the FY mid-year summary, which you all got an update on at the last school board meeting. And we're going to talk a little bit about FY '20 with a focus on the BA lanes, which has been the subject of some of the board discussion in the last six months, based on a follow-on motion you all had, and substitute pay. So I think I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Smith and let him make any introductory remarks. Then we'll get right into it and let you look at some of our top information, some of our recommendations.
And I'm going to remind my board members that Ms. Darrenak Kofax and Ms. Evans will be leading this work session.
Thank you. I was just going to remind that. I do want to just say thank you to everyone who's here. I think when we first talked about, we're going to start with the mid-year, right, Lee? And that, just for my board members, is relatively routine, minimal changes, and it's going to come back to the board for action on December 20th. And so if anyone has questions, they can direct it to, I thought it was Janie. It's Janie. Janie and I.
So, good morning, everyone. We have a lot to get through this morning. So as people have said, we're going to have a brief discussion about the mid-year, any updates to the mid-year, and then we will have a broader discussion on the FY '20 budget within some options that we were asked to bring back regarding BA lanes and substitutes. And so we know that we'll, the board and staff will have an opportunity as we get full-on into the budget cycle after the superintendent's proposed in January, to have a full discussion about many of the topics that will occur with the FY '20 discussion and BA lanes and substitutes. But we just wanted to provide you with some of those options upfront. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Burden, and she will go over the FY ' 19 mid-year.
Good morning. As Mr. Smith said, today's work session on financial matters has three components, and we're planning on spending about 30 minutes on mid-year, if that long, and then an hour on the fiscal '20 budget discussion, with the majority of the dialogue being among school board members, and then about 30 minutes on the BA lanes and subpay item. So if you go to the first page with the chart, that's just a section heading, this chart shows the fiscal '19 mid-year summary, school operating fund only. And the purpose of mid-year is to get an opportunity to revise the fiscal '19 budget based on current year trends, new requirements, things that have become known or requested since we did year-end back in July. The changes at this point that are requested are minimal. We had 2.2 million in sales tax come in after year-end, and we're expecting a $400,000 decrease in expenditures for a total of 2.6 million, which will be added to the beginning balance. And that's good, because we are expecting a 2.6 million shortfall in state aid due to enrollment. I'll go over projected versus actual enrollment on the next slide. Federal revenue's increasing 1.5 million. That's primarily IDEA funding and some Carl Perkins funds. Expenditure changes include the parallel increases to IDEA and Carl Perkins, plus a couple of other small changes. If you go to the next slide, this basically shows the official enrollment for general ed budget to actual, because the fiscal '19 approved projection is what the budget is based on. We're 2,119 students less than the approved projection, a difference of about 1.2%. And again, to be clear, this is projected enrollment that the budget was based on compared to actual September 30 enrollment. Official special ed, non-traditional programs, and VSEP enrollment counts are not taken until December or later, as noted in the chart. And we came in under projection across all levels, which I said on last Thursday night, and I'll say again, does not necessarily result in any cost savings, especially since it's about 1%. But I do want to clarify that, that it doesn't generally result in any cost savings in the current year, but then you will see ramping back of enrollment in the next budget year, and that's where you will indeed see cost savings. The level of staffing needed is more about the distribution at each location instead of the cumulative total. And the contraction can probably best be seen by the staffing reserve balance that we have currently, which is about 108 positions. And recall, last year at this time, I think we'd fully depleted the staffing reserve. In fact, we're seeing a contraction at all across the region. I thought you would want to see this chart, based on the Department of Ed, Virginia Department of Ed's most recent report. You can see that all the NOVA divisions' enrollment contracted a bit in fiscal '19 compared to fiscal '18 enrollment increases. The increases from fiscal '17 to '18 range from Fairfax at a half a percent to Manassas Park City at three and a half, and Loudon, Alexander, and Arlington are all near or at 3%. And then the growth from '18 to '19, all of the divisions' enrollment growth slowed, ranging from Manassas City at negative 0.9% to 2.3% in Arlington. And Loudon's increase has shown a 3% to 4% over the past few years, and they only increased to 1.7%.
Lee, could I just make a comment? One of the things the board continues to give us feedback on that we're trying to do here is provide not just data, but some analysis. So we really wanted to show you this chart to let you put our data in context to what other school divisions are seeing. And you're seeing really a slight contraction in growth across all of our school divisions. So I just wanted to share that with you.
And, you know, doing a deeper dive as to what this can be attributed to will be covered at the enrollment discussion as part of the CIP later in December. But I will say that a regional decline is often the result of increased mobility, a lack of affordable housing, greater zoning enforcement, and other variables like that. So if, should I move on to fiscal '20, or are there questions?
There is a question. Mr. Moon.
Just for, just for point of clarification, did you state that our staffing reserve has been exhausted? Or do we have a staffing reserve still to be used for this school year?
Yes, we have 108 positions that are still available to be used for this year.
Okay. So even though you have stated that the lower enrollment compared to the projection earlier this year might not provide any savings for the current year, but that may result in using less, potentially less, from the staffing reserve?
Yes.
So that could...
Yes, I meant a direct correlation, meaning we have 2,000 less students, and so we didn't feel some of our general ed classroom teachers that were budgeted for that enrollment. But the staffing reserve, most certainly.
You know, I don't have papers with me right now, but I remember seeing, preparing for today's work session, yesterday, recording, going through some of the documents that, looking at the historical enrollment projection data, that 2,100, that number seems to be larger than other numbers in prior years for over a decade. Is that, is that fair for me to say? I think I might have seen just one other year with more than 2,000, but this is the only second time in more than a decade.
Yeah, I think 2016 was the last time that we saw this kind of significant difference between projection and actual enrollment. But we still may pick up more students. I mean, the 2,119 is based on general education, but if our numbers for special education, VSEP, and the non-traditional programs come up slightly, then that would reduce that. But you're absolutely right. This is a different, a little bit larger decrease than we've seen in previous years.
So when do we get those numbers? Updated special ed numbers? Is that...
We usually have those by December, January for special ed, because the state reporting is as of December 1st. Those numbers come in later because of, it takes time to assess. So September 30, we don't, we don't really know.
I'm in question about a deeper dive in enrollment projection discussion. I think I heard you said, correct me if I heard you wrong, later December? And we are in December, and when am I doing it?
Mr. Pytberg, do you, can you speak to when?
Yes, I mean, we have the whole plan for the presentation of the CIP and the membership and enrollment trends is at the next school board meeting.
Okay.
And then we have a series of meetings afterwards, including a work session, to where I'm sure we'll have this conversation, because it does show, as you say, Mr. Moon, a shift. And, and then that shift is going to, again, if you look at what's going around in our region, what's planned, and into the future, even though we're seeing a little contraction, a little leveling off, and things will get into much greater detail as you've asked for, we will see in the future that there's going to be a lot of change that's going to perhaps impact and gain enrollment for us. So, yeah, it'll be a heated, I mean, not a heated, but an interesting conversation.
Okay, one last question on this one, and maybe this goes to the superintendent's, as he's going to be presenting as a proposed budget at the first meeting in January, whether this contraction in enrollment projection is going to be reflected in his proposal?
Yes.
Because from the last meeting with the county board of supervisors, we are looking at the delta of $15.6 million, something around there, whether this is going to impact up on that gap?
Yes. We, I mean, we're still calculating staffing and that sort of thing, doing the final pieces of the superintendent's proposed...
And that, just for my board members, is relatively routine, minimal changes, and it's going to come back to the board for action on December 20th. And so if anyone has questions, they can direct it to, I thought it was Janie. It's Janie. Janie and I.
So, good morning, everyone. We have a lot to get through this morning, so as people have said, we're going to have a brief discussion about the mid-year, any updates to the mid-year, and then we will have a broader discussion on the FY '20 budget, within some options that we were asked to bring back regarding BA lanes and substitutes. And so, we know that we'll, the board and staff will have an opportunity, as we get full-on into the budget cycle, after the superintendent's proposed in January, to have a full discussion about many of the topics that will occur with the FY '20 discussion and BA lanes and substitutes, but we just wanted to provide you with some of those options upfront. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Burden, and she will go over the mid-year, the FY '19 mid-year.
Good morning. As Mr. Smith said, today's work session on financial matters has three components, and we're planning on spending about 30 minutes on mid-year, if that long, and then an hour on the fiscal '20 budget discussion, with the majority of the dialogue being among school board members, and then about 30 minutes on the BA lanes and subpay item. So if you go to the first page with the chart, this is a section heading, this chart shows the fiscal '19 mid-year summary, school operating fund only, and the purpose of mid-year is to get an opportunity to revise the fiscal '19 budget based on current year trends, new requirements, things that have become known or requested since we did year-end back in July. The changes at this point that are requested are minimal. We had 2.2 million in sales tax come in after year-end, and we're expecting a $400,000 decrease in expenditures for a total of 2.6 million, which will be added to the beginning balance, and that's good, because we are expecting a 2.6 million shortfall in state aid due to enrollment. I'll go over projected versus actual enrollment on the next slide. Federal revenue's increasing 1.5 million, that's primarily IDEA funding and some Carl Perkins funds. Expenditure changes include the parallel increases to IDEA and Carl Perkins, plus a couple of other small changes. If you go to the next slide, this basically shows the official enrollment for general ed, budget to actual, because the fiscal '19 approved projection is what the budget is based on. We're 2,119 students less than the approved projection, a difference of about 1.2%. And again, to be clear, this is projected enrollment that the budget was based on compared to actual September 30 enrollment. Official special ed, non-traditional programs, and VSEP enrollment counts are not taken until December or later, as noted in the chart. And we came in under projection across all levels, which I said on last Thursday night, and I'll say again, does not necessarily result in any cost savings, especially since it's about 1%. But I do want to clarify that, that it doesn't generally result in any cost savings in the current year, but then you will see ramping back of enrollment in the next budget year, and that's where you will indeed see cost savings. The level of staffing needed is more about the distribution at each location, instead of the cumulative total. And the contraction can probably best be seen by the staffing reserve balance that we have currently, which is about 108 positions, and recall, last year at this time, I think we'd fully depleted the staffing reserve. In fact, we're seeing a contraction at all across the region. I thought you would want to see this chart, based on the Department of Ed, Virginia Department of Ed's most recent report, you can see that all the NOVA divisions' enrollment contracted a bit in fiscal '19 compared to fiscal '18 enrollment increases. The increases from fiscal '17 to '18 range from Fairfax at a half a percent to Manassas Park City at three and a half, and Loudon, Alexander, and Arlington are all near or at 3%. And then the growth from '18 to '19, all of the divisions' enrollment growth slowed, ranging from Manassas City at negative .9% to 2.3% in Arlington. And Loudon's increase has shown a 3% to 4% over the past few years, and they only increased to 1.7%.
Lee, could I just make a comment? One of the things the board continues to give us feedback on that we're trying to do here is provide not just data, but some analysis, so we really wanted to show you this chart to let you put our data in context to what other school divisions are seeing. And you're seeing, really, a slight contraction in growth across all of our school divisions, so I just wanted to share that with you.
And, you know, doing a deeper dive as to what this can be attributed to will be covered at the enrollment discussion as part of the CIP later in December, but I will say that a regional decline is often the result of increased mobility, a lack of affordable housing, greater zoning enforcement, and other variables like that. So if, should I move on to fiscal '20, or are there questions?
There is a question. Mr. Moon.
Just for a point of clarification, did you state that our staffing reserve has been exhausted? Or do we have a staffing reserve still to be used for this school year?
Yes, we have 108 positions that are still available to be used for this year.
Okay. So even though you have stated that the lower enrollment compared to the projection earlier this year might not provide any savings for the current year, but that may result in using less, potentially less, from the staffing reserve?
Yes.
So that could...
Yes, I meant a direct correlation, meaning we have 2,000 less students, and so we didn't feel some of our general ed classroom teachers that were budgeted for that enrollment, but the staffing reserve most certainly.
You know, I don't have papers with me right now, but I remember seeing, preparing for today's work session, yesterday, we're going through some of the documents that, looking at the historical enrollment projection data, that 2,100, that number seems to be larger than other numbers in prior years for over a decade, is that, is that fair for me to say? I think I might have seen just one other year with more than 2,000, but this is the only second time in more than a decade.
Yeah, I think 2016 was the last time that we saw this kind of significant difference between projection and actual enrollment. But we still may pick up more students. I mean, the 2,119 is based on general education, but if our numbers for special education, VSEP, and the non-traditional programs come up slightly, then that would reduce that, but you're absolutely right. This is a different, a little bit larger decrease than we've seen in previous years.
So when do we get those numbers, updated special ed numbers? Is that...
We usually have those by December, January, for special ed, because the state reporting is as of December 1st. Those numbers come in later because of, it takes time to assess. So September 30, we don't, we don't really know.
I'm in question about a deeper dive in enrollment projection discussion. I think I heard you said, correct me if I heard you wrong, later December? And we are in December, and when am I doing it?
Mr. Plattenberg, do you, can you speak to when?
Yes, I mean, we have the whole plan for the presentation of the CIP and the membership and enrollment trends is at the next school board meeting.
Okay.
And then we have a series of meetings afterwards, including a work session, to where I'm sure we'll have this conversation, because it does show, as you say, Mr. Moon, a shift. And then that shift is going to, again, if you look at what's going around in our region, what's planned, and into the future, even though we're seeing a little contraction, a little leveling off, and things will get into much greater detail as you've asked for, we will see in the future that there's going to be a lot of change that's going to perhaps impact and gain enrollment for us. So, yeah, it'll be a heated, I mean, not a heated, but an interesting conversation.
Okay, one last question on this one, and maybe this goes to the superintendent's, as he's going to be presenting his proposed budget at the first meeting in January, whether this contraction in enrollment projection is going to be reflected in his proposal? Because from the last meeting with the county board of supervisors, we are looking at the delta of $15.6 million, something around there, whether this is going to impact upon that gap?
Yes. We, I mean, we're still calculating staffing and that sort of thing, doing the final pieces of the superintendent's proposed budget, but we are showing a reduction in the amount of costs that we had assumed on November 27th for the joint school board, board supervisor fiscal forecast.
Okay, thank you so much. I want to welcome Mrs. Schultz for joining on this side, because everybody else seems to be on that side.
Yeah, don't take that personal.
Ms. McLaughlin.
So, I appreciate Mr. Moon's questions. I know this is not our enrollment trends work session, but it does allow us to sort of ask staff, I think, some preliminary questions, so you might be prepared when we go into the deeper dive. And so, the one question that came to mind is, Ms. Burden, you mentioned the regional contraction numbers that we saw, and that it could be attributed to a number of things, affordability, housing enforcement. What I would really like, Dr. Braybrand, is if we could have at that discussion a five-year trend year line data, and also, what is the subject matter expertise that's in analyzing this and saying why we're seeing regional contractions? Because, I mean, I appreciate what Ms. Burden's saying, but it would be helpful for us, and I think the public, to have a sense of who's actually doing the analysis for the Washington region in terms of contraction, and what really are the driving forces. I think we all know, for those of us who live here, the affordability is right on the front of our minds of what it's like to live here. But I think it's important that, as policymakers, we also have a sense of, is there something that has remarkably changed in whether, how the government is doing things, or, you know, how the job markets are, but I think that will help us to figure out what we're looking at even longer term down the road, so. And I just want to point out...
McLaughlin, can I ask you a question about your question?
Uh-oh.
No, for your, for your five-year trend analysis, do you want aggregate? Do you want school by school? Do you want how, or, you can think about that.
Oh, well, excellent suggestion, Ms. Darnakovacs. I mean, I do think that, you know, I think as a next step, I'll bring it up, and then we can, you know, discuss with the board and LT what's reasonable to have you provide in terms of aggregate versus disaggregated data on enrollment declines, because I think that can also help us understand what might be happening here. But first, I do want to thank staff for the data you're bringing forward, and in particular, I found it interesting when we break out the enrollment of kindergarten just this year over last, 220 or 219 fewer students, and then yet, first through sixth grade, it's 829. If you were to have comparable decline across those sixth grade levels that you would see at kindergarten, we would have seen a number of about 1,300. So, and then even middle school, it's 131 compared to kindergarten at 219. So, something definitely, whether it's just a off year for births, and, you know, we'll see another uptick, but that's why I think the five and 10-year trend line is helpful. But it is, it is noticeable to see that. And I, Ms. Burden, I want to thank you and staff for bringing the prior chart that I asked, going back to. This is extremely helpful. I really, really appreciate seeing contextually what we look like compared to everybody else. That will so drive, I think, a meaningful conversation of what we can expect, so, thank you. I don't think we're all the way done yet. This was just supposed to be some clarifying questions in between.
This is clarifying questions for mid-year, so, Ms. Schultz, if you don't have mid-year, no, you're not next, sorry, I just wanted to tell you that.
Oh, so I need to get all of my mid-year questions in now?
Um, yeah.
I thought we weren't done yet with mid-year.
We're not, well, we kind of are.
This is it for mid-year?
This is it for mid-year, so if we want more question, if you want...
I'll do a go-back.
Okay, that's good. Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then Ms. Schultz.
Just sort of a little bit of history with, we will obviously be able to experience some changes in our, in our allocation of revenues because of exactly what we are seeing here regionally. And again, I agree, Ms. Burton, thank you very much for showing this context. But our, our population ups and downs is so dependent on so many other factors. At the beginning of the Great Recession in 2008, we all of a sudden had a huge increase in student enrollment, huge, because people couldn't afford to go anywhere. And of course, with, with Amazon, and what I am hearing is the strong possibility of Apple also coming, that will have an impact. And as was noted, the planned building and redevelopment areas throughout the county that's already been approved, and then what is likely to come, and if, in fact, the Amazon salaries, and who knows what happens at Apple, if the salaries are at pretty strong six-figure, that will drive another interesting enrollment situation. So, it's almost as though these enrollment trends, we have to look at how it impacts our budget a year at a time, because it can change. Years ago, there was always, the board of supervisors, the school boards at the time, would say, "Well, Fairfax County is at build-out." Well, I've come to understand we're never at build-out, you can always build higher, and planning goes forward. So, again, this will help us, I think, with our, with our budget planning, certainly for FY '20, which is welcome, but I think change tends to be our constant, so the picture will likely change going forward, so. But this is, again, very helpful context as to what we're all looking at right now. Thanks.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you. This is very helpful. I actually found this slide and the previous slide incredibly insightful as to what's happening. And actually, when you, if you look back at the previous slide, Slide 4, you'll see that the K, that the decrease of 1,020 of 1 through 6 is actually close to, if you add the 6 through 12, which is the same cohort, you're at 970 almost. And so, you know, you're within 50 kids on that same cohort, so I'm not overly surprised there, or the same number of grades. But going to the next page, on Page 5, what is particularly interesting is that you can almost tease out some of the regional developments, because you do see, even though that there is a slowing of growth, Alexandria, Arlington, Manassas Park, Prince William, and Loudon all continue to grow. The, the contraction, they're slowing in growth, whereas we've actually decreased in Fairfax, Falls Church City, and Manassas City. So, following up on Ms. McLaughlin's question about what are our, what's the trend analysis, I think we have to look at the trend analysis on a regional basis. I would also urge my colleagues to understand a couple of things that I was made aware of over the weekend. One, our housing stock, we don't have sufficient housing stock right now for turnover in housing. And the reason is, is that with the volatility of the markets and the increase in interest rates, you actually have more and more seniors aging in place, and deciding not to make that big change. And so, there's that piece, but all the revitalization zones that are going on, and I will be happy to share with my colleagues, the presentation I was given over the weekend on what is happening in the Richmond Highway corridor with revitalization is the density. And what is happening as far as new builds are, as you say, Ms. Strauss, building upwards, but they're being built upwards in a manner which is attractive to families living in them. So it may be, when we look at this trend analysis, that we have to look at some of the models that we have traditionally used for projecting kids, to look at more of an urban planning model, which allows for more kids coming out of our apartments and other areas. The other piece is that, along the line of the revitalization, I was given the number of a billion dollars has already been committed to building out along the Route 1 corridor. A billion dollars. That's huge, because that means that although we may see some contraction, we are going to see some accelerated growth with Embark Richmond Highway. I think you're seeing the same thing with the Silver Line, and the piece of it being that the people that are moving in, the number one and number two locations for millennials to actually purchase homes in the past year were actually in Broventon and Huntington. And it's, it goes to that housing affordability piece. And so what we're going to see is maybe some shifts of where people are relocating to.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. And I think you said that was, you got that information from a Embark meeting?
Two different meetings. One was the Urban Design Workshop that was held for Embark Richmond Highway on Saturday, where over 100 people were in the audience, really unpacking the, what they call the CVCs, I think they call them, and they're just community business zones that are being developed all along Richmond Highway. And then the second one was Senator Servell, Servell has an annual conference where he goes through quite a bit of detail, which he gave an excellent briefing on the impact of Amazon being located here, and the, the deal that was offered to Amazon, the fact that the jobs have to be here four years before they get, get the bonus from the, from the government, which is unique, and the level of it in the multiplier effects and things like that. So I'll ask somebody to PDF that and send it around.
Thank you, that helps to put context into your comments, I really appreciate that.
But what would be very helpful is, when we talk about the trend analysis, to look at it in our regions versus just Fairfax County as a whole.
All right.
And I can add, just having reviewed the CIP, and as we're preparing that presentation, we have a lot of that information built into the CIP, and we'll be discussing that. We have links to all of those zones in Fairfax County, so that board members can easily link, and the community can easily link from the document to information and presentations that the county has regarding these new zones. So we will be discussing that. We'll have that discussion around the trends, and we can talk to Mr. Plattenberg and his team around, looking at that by regions, depending on how you end this with the next steps.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Schultz?
So, while I missed the first couple minutes, I've been able to listen to my colleagues on the appreciation for this, but I'm confused, because this is not a trend, it's a data point. So, I don't understand why we think this is good or bad or indifferent. It's a, it's a dipstick at a particular moment in time, and I have no idea what this means in context. I understand, and I'm glad you asked for the five-year, because I was going to ask for at least five, if not, if not five, if not 510. And the, again, we're at percentages without the raw numbers, and if I recall from our last meeting, I did a quick look, and our free and reduced meal population is more than double, Dr. Braybrand, than the entire Arlington County school system. So, you know, what their percentage changed to our percentage changed without the raw numbers is utterly meaningless. A .35% change for us can be, you know, massive, 2% to them may be a fraction of our .35%. So, I mean, and Ms. Kovacs, you tended to look like you were going there in terms of the impact, an overall budget impact. I mean, frankly, I'm surprised the board of supervisors haven't asked for money back, you know, that we were this off. My colleagues are unsurprised by the fact that, you know, for, I think, eight and a half years, I've said, "If you don't have student projection methodology right, everything else is wrong after that." And that's why this is so significant. This is crucial, because it doesn't sort of matter what it is at the division level. I have schools in my, my region that, within three years, have grown 20, almost 20%. That, that doesn't, that, these numbers belie what's happening at the individual school level. And so, where the seats are matters in terms of how we budget, where the, you know, where we have capital infrastructure conversations, I mean, mid-year budget review is, of course, operational, but where the impact is and how we're able to plan for that in a, in a budget, where we don't know in May, when we release the CIP, who's coming back in August, is a problem. Because if we're going to create things like reserves, but then our reserve personnel are gone in the first 30 days, and you've had 100 additional students show up at a, at an elementary school between May and, and when we release the CIP in August, then we don't necessarily have, our, our planning for staffing at the building level is greatly impacted by our student, you know, it's walking the cat backwards. So, you know, if we can go to the other, the previous slide or the after slide. So, you know, this is telling us something. I don't know if the correlation is that we're losing children to private schools, but if you see, you know, a cohort transition here of kindergarten, what was, the reason why the five-year is important is this will tell us, okay, where are we going with this? Are we on a, you know, is this, are we on a nosedive here, or what? But I do think, Ms. Kovacs, that you're correct, is that we have to have sort of a more granular understanding, because are we planning to hire more elementary teachers in the coming years? Or is that the waning population, and we're going to have a burgeoning population into the middle school and high school? So I'm just hoping for more relevant data.
Right, and that can come, I don't know if you had arrived yet, but Mr. Plattenberg talked about the several meetings that he's going to have, and we're going to have this kind of information distributed there, but we can still ask for something. Again, we're going to be voting on this mid-year budget on December 20th, so I don't think, you know, the granular data that you and I might be thinking of is necessary or needed at that time, but absolutely for, as we look at the CIP and look further out, so...
So can I ask a question about, has there been any pushback from the board of supervisors over our swing and a miss on the numbers?
No.
And if, if I could add about the presentation around the mid-year, we know that there, we often need to provide clarity about enrollment, and so we wanted to ensure that we provided that clarity for the FY '19, so that you can see the impact of enrollment on our current budget. We know that we have scheduled an hour-long discussion today to talk about the FY '20 budget, so this was really an opportunity to provide some very high-level numbers as it relates to the FY '19 mid-year, knowing that Mr. Plattenberg and crew would be coming at the end of the month to have a much more meaningful conversation around enrollment. Now, one of the things that we can consider moving forward, there was a time where we had that enrollment conversation prior to the CIP, and I think that, as we think about moving forward, that we would want to consider having that enrollment conversation prior to the CIP. At this point, we're going to have the enrollment and the CIP at the same time, and so we can certainly consider that moving forward, that the enrollment discussion occurs so that we're, that board members have the information they need to then have a good discussion around the CIP, but...
I think that would be very helpful, and one of the things that I've consistently asked for, and maybe this will be, you know, the year my wish comes true, which is we show the CIP, like we show our homework. We've projected five years out, and we always show a rolling five years out, but we never show what actually happened. And then the crucial thing becomes, and this came up as a part of previous conversations, is what happens during, to enrollment during the year? Because I do think that there are some pretty significant swings. I've done the charting, and I think we peak out in, I think, January or February actually is our highest enrollment, and then we, so we, we seem to have a slope. And so, it may be that we're not anticipating or comparing against just the September number, but we have to plan, okay, so what's our variance? You know, what's, do a gap analysis over what, what is our... You know, what's, do a gap analysis over, what is our enrollment over the course of the year? Because that's not the number now, and it's not going to be the number in January, but it might be the number in September. And what does that degree of fluctuation, and Ms. Evans, this goes a little bit to what you and I have talked about, is the mobility is, and Ms. Corbett Sanders, the impact of military families moving in and out, and how much does that change how we budget and how we plan for distribution of resources over the course of the year, rather than just having a reserve, and then it's gone in September, and then, you know, principals are a little bit out of luck. And I know, I know a lot of principals struggle with that, because then they're sort of on the dime to pick up and meet needs as they fluctuate over the course of the year. So we may want to think on a distributed model on resources that, you know, we give them out over, as they match the changes, when the changes happen.
All right, I'm trying to keep on schedule, so I have Ms. Evans followed by Ms. McLaughlin for a go-back, and then we will go on to the next portion of the agenda, which is the FY '20 budget discussion and VA lays.
Thank you, and that's a perfect segue to one comment. I'm certainly glad we have 108 positions left in the reserve, precisely because we have that influx, often have at a number of our schools, particularly in our high-mobility schools, and as we've discussed in the past. So do we have any projection on that issue, what we expect in January, February, and March this year? Do we have any sense? I know sometimes it makes a difference what's going on at the border, for example, but do we have any idea? Or is it always a surprise to us? Mr. Plattenberg.
It's not always really a surprise to us, but a lot of this conversation really gets into the enrollment trends and analysis that we used to do in October, the beginning of November, and now for the past two years we haven't. Obviously, there's a need and a desire for us to come back and regroup and really be talking about that beforehand. We've had some shifts in trends, and our belief is that in certain areas, in a category, for example, like the unintended minors that we used to receive, right? We've seen a contraction, significant contraction. Some years, we had increasing students that we had to accommodate. So those kinds of shifts are the nuances that I think the board's looking for, that we are hoping to provide a little bit of a more detailed answer. But some of them, you know, really lag over time. And just like we talk about, and somebody mentioned HQ2, and you can talk about Google, and you can talk about Apple, and you can talk about what was already planned for, whether it's Embark, what's already been planned for the Tysons area, what's already been planned for Springfield, the Dulles Technology Corner. Each and every one of those things have the opportunity for this shift, this plateau, this element that we're experiencing now, to all of a sudden change. And that change over time is why it's so beneficial to have that conversation earlier, and also to reiterate the fundamental fact that it's a one-year look at a five-year projection, and that it's annually revisited by each and every one of us. And some of the comments about the level of detail, the amount of migration, net migration in, net migration out, we do see, as Ms. Schultz mentioned, in February, that is generally the peak period, if you will, for budgetary purposes. That's why they use projection. We use actual enrollment for demographer purposes. So I think that whole discussion really is something that would have probably set the stage a little better, since I know you want to talk about the budget.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. And I know in the past, we've had one-on-one conversations about our individual schools. At what point are we planning to do that this year? After the CIP is, or before? I mean, I do want to have that conversation.
Well, certainly, we're available to meet pretty much anytime, if you have certain questions.
All right, well, I will set that up individually then, thank you. And the only other issue I wanted to raise was the one that I had alerted you to at the board meeting the other night about the grants. If we have an apples-to-apples comparison, either grants up to this point in both fiscal years or our projection for this fiscal year, do we have a comparison on that?
Not yet, we're still working on that.
Okay, I would like for that to be a next step then, Ms. Erinette Kofax, just to, thank you so much.
Ms. McLaughlin for a go-back.
Yes, I had raised this at Thursday night's business meeting, that when we were going to be talking about the mid-year budget. I'd wanted to know what we had specifically built into the budget for the increased enrollment. So, you know, every year we'll say, when we build our budget and present to the board supervisors, we expect enrollment's going to go up X number of students, and it's going to cost the division X millions of dollars to educate those students. So that was one of the things I had mentioned, Dr. Braybrand, and the reason being is because, you know, on the one hand, we, I believe Ms. Burden had said on Thursday night that this enrollment fluctuation was about 1.2%. So it's not a big variance necessarily, but on the other hand, typically when we have enrollment projections that are going to go up approximately 2,000 students in a given academic year, it's a sizable number in terms of millions of dollars. And so when we look at this mid-year that's before us, there's not a penny here that I see that's saying, I mean, we're accounting for where the state is going to ding us for it. But I don't see anything that shows, you know, what, was there not a single penny left in our mid-year budget by the lack of students who came in? I mean, what, what happened to those dollars? I know there was a reference to our staffing reserve, but I think that for the public's ability and the board's ability to understand and follow, what did this mean in terms of our side, not just the state revenue change? I would like to have more information before I can vote on this. So do we have that?
And we can provide that. I know that the dollars that you're talking about are still within the staffing reserve. So when we talk about those positions, it's roughly about $10 million in the staffing reserve, 100 positions, that we have not allocated. So that's where those dollars are. We also know that students don't come in perfect packages, and so when we're thinking about that allocations of where students go, we provide those positions in the staffing reserve to meet the needs within the schools, based on how students do come to us. And so it's not as easy as doing a student, simple division with that. But again, the positions that we do have left, it's roughly $10 million that we haven't allocated at this point.
Okay, and so last year at this time of early December, the staffing reserve was depleted, it was empty?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just trying to, not just for my own edification, I think it's really important for the board and for the public to understand what we're talking about here, which is, it's not as if, like to Ms. Schultz's question, do we hand back the money to the board supervisors? I mean, at some point, the money is going to fall out. If it turns out we never had to draw on the $10 million in the staffing reserve, then that's where we will yield the $10 million at the end. That will show we had fewer students and we spent it. If it, I just, I really think it's important that there have that clarity.
Yes, Ms. McLaughlin, I understand the clarity. If it goes up and there's more, or when it goes down, what's the equivalent of less? And to be able to explain that through the numbers more clearly, I understand your point.
Yeah, no, well, but actually, I was taking what Mr. Smith said and sort of bottling it so that the public, because I, I think Mr. Smith has a logical explanation for it. I would say, as a continuous improvement model, just to help us as a division and help us as a board, I think that that's, that should have been in here, only because it helps, if Ms. Schultz, who always asks, you know, very detailed questions, but she reflects the fact that the community does ask us, it goes up, it comes down, what does it do? But we didn't reflect it here.
Right, so my other nugget, look, complete candor, I anticipated with this team that you all would pause here and go through this discussion, and the nugget I've already heard, we did it two years ago, two years passed, we would do the numbers first and then the budget. And I think overall, we're going to go back and look. It sounds like that's a better way, it sets up the conversations more sequentially, and it leaves board members with less questions and a more efficient set of work sessions and school board presentations. So I don't know why, honestly, I haven't had time to go back and go why we switched a couple of years ago, but I think switching it back may be helpful. One of the other things, just for you all as board members, sometimes it's juggling the state requirement for turning in deadlines, like September 30th, and December for special ed, all these others, with then doing the analysis of the data and having time to do that reflective analysis and get all of that information to you in a way that is helpful. And I think those are the things, as we continue to do process improvement around our budget, that we need to look at so that the conversations are more sequential.
And to add to, so we have two very distinct things happening here today. We have a discussion about the FY '20 budget, and then the mid-year is really focusing on this current year's budget. And as we move through this year's budget cycle, we will be very clearly explaining to the board any dollars that fall out. We'll have that discussion at third year, and then we have that discussion at year end, so that board members can understand any dollars that are left in the budget, what we would recommend happen to those dollars. So if we have those positions, whatever positions we have left within the budget, we will then recognize those savings and have a clear reporting to the board where those savings came from. At this point with the mid-year, we're not making any recommendations, because we're not at a point where we can expend those positions yet. We want to hold on to those 108 positions to see what will happen with enrollment, and then if nothing does happen, if we don't see those increases, then we'll be very clear and transparent to the board that we had these positions, this is the dollar equivalent, and this is what we are going to recommend that we do with those additional dollars. So we'll have that as part of the FY '19 closeout. And then the other part of this discussion was then to have that broader discussion about FY '20. So we kind of have to bifurcate our brains to think about what's happening this year with the mid-year, and then the quarterly adjustments that we make, and then also have the discussion about what's going to happen next year with FY '20. And I know that being new in this role of COO, I've had to do that myself, to pull myself out of one budget year and think about the other budget year, and having to do that at the same time can be a little confusing at times.
The only other question I had, and I hesitate to bring it up because it's such a tiny dollar amount, but it's on there, and I just, even if we just do it as a Braybrand briefing for an explanation, but the employee service awards, that's going to be a recurring cost. That's not like a one-time thing. So $15,000 here in the grand scheme of what our budget is, it's not a big deal, but it just seems sort of an unusual place to stick this in. And again, $15,000 times what we're going to spend over 10 years, it's now $150,000 we spent on employee service awards. I think it would just have been helpful to understand what has changed that we're doing this, and why are we doing it mid-year versus why wasn't this just something we're going to be doing for next year? What, I think it'd kind of be helpful to know what that is.
The employee service awards were a cut from the previous budget, it was a reduction, and based on feedback that we had from our employees this year around the employee service awards, the certificates that would come at the end of the year, and we think about recognizing our employees, and how important it is to recognize our employees, that was something where we realized that perhaps that cut wasn't the best cut to recommend. And so we wanted to put that back into the budget, and so this was the best time to do that. So it's not adding anything new, it's basically restoring a reduction that we took within the budget, so that we can continue to provide that to our employees.
No, I appreciate that, so, but what they're getting is a certificate, and that's going to cost an extra $15,000?
It's, and Mr. Drager can speak to that, because that's part of his responsibility.
They receive a certificate as well as a lanyard for their years of service, 15, 20, 25, that just reflects that.
Okay.
Megan, let me, let me share one other thing on top of it. This was late in the year, May or June, end of the year, I learned about a cut, and I just go, it's not acceptable, this is Fairfax County Public Schools, we can't even print out a certificate and give people credit, I want it fixed. I know I turned to Marty at some meeting and want, I want that fixed.
Yeah.
And I want it fixed for next year.
Yeah, I don't.
No, 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 but just for context for you all, why, I don't think it made it into our formal budget last year, it was late, late in the year, maybe it was early summer. And I said, we need to do the right thing by our people to recognize their service. It's been around as long as I was in the system, and I don't think, I think it's that, it's kind of a cut, it seems small, but morale-wise, it sends a much deeper message, and so I think.
I would not disagree, Dr. Braybrand. What I would have preferred, though, I think, because honestly, the summary on here doesn't help this division. What it should have said in there, in the narrative, is this was a budget cut, we value our employees, and we wanted to improve morale. Instead, this just looks like we decided to go spend more money.
Okay.
So that's, that's an issue. And then the other thing is, because this is a mid-year, whether this is $15,000 or $15 million, I just think that from a practice point, why not just put that in as a one-time for now, and then let us know in January that you want this as a recurring? It just, it bothers me a little bit that this got put in the way it did as a recurring cost, because we're at a mid-year right now. I think it should have just been, this is how much we need to be able to do this for FY '19, and then you could say to us, I want this to be a recurring going FY '20 forward. And again, this is a tiny little amount, I'm more wanting at a macro-level practice, I'm uncomfortable as a board member, having a recurring cost being built into a mid-year. I think that's really what bothers, what concerns me is then it becomes permanent based on your decision, based on when we build the budget and it's proposed. So I'm glad we're looking at ways to help employ morale. I love the idea, especially of service awards. The only reason I asked about if there was anything beyond a certificate, because this is what it lists here. Any of us who've gotten, like, certificates, whether it's from V SBA or otherwise, honestly, it says nice gesture, but, I mean, people just stick it into a folder. So my point is, the lanyard's great, I think it would have been nice if we put in here a service award with lanyard, something so the public doesn't go, you're going to spend $15,000 printing paper.
Okay. Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then I'll have final comments before we move on in the presentation.
I was just going to briefly comment on the fact that even though we have a decrease in enrollment, and the question is, well, then why aren't we cutting, why didn't we realize more cost savings? Is because we did make some decisions as a board to ensure that we put caps on classrooms. And last year, that's what happened to much of the staffing reserve. And so when we have conversations, I do think it would be helpful to have a synopsis of how what we've done, is we've actually gone back and restored some of the cuts that we had done over the past several years as a result of tough budget years. I'm sure that doesn't realize all of it, but that is part of the conversation, is that last year when we addressed some concerns about our classrooms being overcrowded, that we did put a cap in on our elementary school classes.
Can I just ask you a question about your question, or your point?
So my question is, how much of that got absorbed here?
Right, because it's not reported.
And that's my question. It's not reported out there, but I would, that's why I'm asking for the effective communication on, the next step being, how much of this actually was absorbed by restoring some of the cuts we've done in the past? Because we did take, it wasn't just a little whittle off here and a little whittle off here, we had significant cuts to the system over time, and Ms. McLaughlin actually raised, you know, here's, here's an area where we started to restore things. And so it would be helpful, when you come back to us on an update for this, is how much of, what have we restored?
We'll have that, we have the breakdowns for the staffing reserve by category, and so we'll have that for the board. We've provided that earlier in the year, and then as it's been updated, we can provide another update to the board.
And my last comment, it's more to do with the conversation here on enrollment trends. And I would ask both the chair, vice chair, and Dr. Braybrand to work with Mr. Plattenberg, and I, myself, just like Ms. Evans, is going to kind of work offline with him too, because I do my own enrollment trends, I've been taking, I've been watching them since I've been here. And I know I'm, I have some numbers that are much, much lower in some of my schools, and, you know, I'd like to get staff's opinion on why they think, I have my own opinions on why that might be, but I'd like to talk to the professionals here who are, who are doing it. But I think, Dr. Braybrand, and this is just kind of a memory thing, part of what, why we moved up with the CIP was because we were seeing that big blip in January, and so we might, that's why I'm saying, like, you guys might need to huddle and really talk about, you know, this is where we are. talk about, you know, this is where we are in November, you know, when things settle down, this is the numbers we're sending to Richmond, this is where we are. But this is what Fairfax really looks like in January, if that blip continues. And then what do we do? You know, do we use projections or we do real numbers? I know there's conversations about, should we, you know, because the Board of Supervisors often says, you surprised us because you're changing your numbers. And we're trying not to do that. And I understand that having a more level playing field. But, you know, when the numbers were up like a thousand kids, you really needed more monies there, particularly in the lean, lean years, or things were going to go haywire. So that's just a little bit of historical memory about why I know that, I think that might have happened a few years back. And, but I think we all need to kind of huddle and think about what's the best way to do this moving forward because of what happened this year. So thank you. Now, Ms. Burden, if you'll continue, please.
So moving on to the fiscal 20 discussion. You know, we thought it might be good to kind of go over how we do our enrollment projections. Projections are based on historic and current student enrollment for the division and its individual schools. It's derived using the cohort survival method, which provides the most reliable means of determining future student populations. And again, factors in the most current information are what we saw on September 30 for our actual enrollment. The cohort survival methodology predicts the number of kids by grade who might enroll over a designated period of time. And, you know, the cohort survival method, y'all probably know this, is just a fancy way to say, if we have 100 kids in the fourth grade this year, then our very beginning point is that we're going to have 100 kids in the fifth grade next year. Kindergarten is often the most difficult to predict because we have to rely on birth rates from five years ago to determine that. And then, of course, the forecast is further refined by comparing the data to expectations regarding boundaries, the local economic activity, building permits, special program moves or transfers, that kind of thing. And so this table shows the official enrollment projections for fiscal 20 that reflect 1,343 students less than the 19 approved projection, a difference of less than 1%. And unlike the other chart, this is fiscal 19 projection to fiscal 20 projection. So the other was fiscal 19 projection to September 30 actual. This is projection to projection. Projections for Level 2, special ed, non-traditional and VSAP are included. These are the only projections that will be completed for the budgeting purposes. Historically, we have completed a spring projection, which often added to our budget requests and despite having already conveyed our needs to the county. We're hoping for a joint effort to not add to the budget once we convey those needs. And a single fall projection is an important component of that. The Planning Office will do a double check in the spring, but we won't add anything to the budget for enrollment at that point unless, you know, there was something truly extraordinary that was happening at that time. In calculating the cost of enrollment increases or decreases begins by applying staffing standards to the projected enrollment. You know, staffing standards are very important because they provide a base level of equity, they avoid favoritism, they help in budgetary planning, and of course, they assure compliance with state standards. We have staffing standards at the elementary level that we're revamping for this year. You know, the board, I think a couple of years ago, y'all talked about this a few minutes ago, about the 26 to 1 class size at the elementary level, I guess grades K through 3, and then 27 for grades 4 through 6. Well, we've streamlined the elementary staffing standard for the superintendent's proposed budget. We also, what the staffing standard actually said was we would divide by 27.25 and weight the needs-based students with the free and reduced eligible numbers to provide extra teachers. And then after the budget was adopted, we would allocate 30 to 40% of the staffing reserve to make sure that we met that 26 to 1. Well, for fiscal 20, we've streamlined that so that we come closer to 26 to 1 at the beginning of the budget process instead of the end of the budget process. So we're using a portion of the staffing reserve so that that change will be cost-neutral. It's more efficient. The principals will love it because they will know their true staffing much earlier than they would have previously. And so basically, we're accomplishing the same thing, but just much earlier in the process. The new staffing standard will be included in the superintendent's proposed budget. Another thing that we're doing in fiscal 20 is we're aligning the budget increases with the strategic plan goals. And if you can go to the next chart, this chart shows the items that are identified in the fiscal 20 preliminary forecast distributed by goal area. It's not a full list, it's just a sample, but you get the idea. So fiscal 20, we'll concentrate on the increases in the budget and, because obviously reviewing the base of 3 billion is much more complicated and will take some time. We have about 160 distinct programs. So we will review selected system-wide programs to ensure resource alignment and of course, efficiency, effectiveness and equity in the future. But for now, we're going to start with the increases. And the budget question process, this was in the Braybrand briefing, so I'm not going to go over it in a lot of detail. But basically, send your budget questions to me. And, you know, you may want to provide a CC to Mr. Smith, Dr. Braybrand, the Budget Chair, and the Vice Budget Chair, and the Clerk of the Board. Please do not send budget questions to other staff members because it makes us, it's impossible to track if they're going all over the system because then I have to count on the person, you know, tracking them back to us. So if you could just send those to me, we'll get them in the right place and get them answered as quickly as possible. You know, if you have something that's urgent, please note that. If you need it quickly for a vote or something, that would be a priority one. If it's important but not urgently needed, then you can indicate priority two, and we'll assume a priority three if you don't indicate one of the other two, which means you'd like to know the information, but it's not needed for a vote or something like that. Questions, of course, don't come back in the order that they were asked because of the time to research. And this year too, we're going to try to indicate the amount of time or staff resources that were used to research and develop the response because we think that's something that perhaps you don't know and would be interested to know as far as the budget questions The next chart shows the budget calendar. Again, we're hoping for a joint effort to not add to the budget once we conveyor needs to the county. Although I recognize that we can probably only hope for a reduction in amendments, changes and follow-ons after the advertised. Change is hard, so baby steps. But you should know that I feel strongly about this. You know, the code envisions that the superintendent will provide a needs-based budget, and with the approval of the school board, they'll be sent, it'll be conveyed to the local governing body. Secondly, there are many unseen challenges of having the budget season last until mid-July with amendments and follow-ons. We don't get, end up getting the documents out until September, and so we're already two to three months behind on planning and reflecting and putting the budget together for fiscal 21. We need to make some structural changes to the budget process, and we don't have the time or the staff or the resources to do that. So we need to finish the budget much, much earlier so that we can begin to plan for the next. Ideally, again, we would have some time to plan and reflect on what we are doing and how we might make changes to make that even better. And that's it for fiscal 20 budget planning.
Okay, thank you. I have a few people. Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Evans, followed by Mr. Moon.
Can we go to the page with the projections for FY 20? So this is why I'm frustrated by these numbers. So we have a projection in the middle of the chart under subtotal 188,414 for fiscal 20 student population. The problem is, is that right now, our November numbers are reporting at 188,295. It's only 119 more students. I mean, fundamentally, I don't even know where this number comes from. So we, I've got to see, I don't have confidence in there's only going to be 119 more students next year. Unless there's something that shows me over time that that's a reasonable projection. And it's because of the change of the population over the course of the year. We were wrong this year, and now we wildly swung back by over 1,300 students, 13 and a half thousand, 1,300 students. So I'm less confident about going into a budget discussion about how we're going to plan for resources when we've already ticked up from September from the 187, I forget, from the previous presentation. So we're already up in numbers now. And so what does that look like? What is the flex of the student population over the course of a year look like? So from September to June, over the last several years, is there, do we normalize out? Do we wind up, you know, always a little bit up? I actually think that from September to June, from my recollection from research, we usually wind up still up a little bit in June from where we started in September, but we were up a lot more in the middle of the year. So we're going to, I'm going to need more detail on this. I mean, I don't know if you need me to ask a budget question to get to more detail, but I think we have to understand what's happening with student population because, again, it's, you know, it's square zero where everything else is built from there.
Right. So I think Tammy hit the nail on the head a little earlier. And again, we can have it all right now. A decision was made a couple of years ago before I got here to reverse and do the budget and then have the numbers afterward. We can move that back. We're going to have the CIP trend analysis in either, what is it, December or January? We have a December 20th, right, two weeks. So all the details, whatever the board needs, we can look at doing it earlier. I would still say, when you look at the 10-year record, we've been less than 1% off on our projections twice. I mean, we've been, we've been less than 1% every year over 10 years. Twice we've been beyond that delta of 1%. It was a few years ago, I guess you said, Lee, 2015 or 2016, and then this one now.
But I'll do deference. If you have one school that has 150 fewer students show up, and we have another school that has 100 more show up, and the net difference is 50, the problem is, is there is a massive cost associated with us having to bank reserves of employees, scramble the substitute costs of filling in. There's a cost associated with getting the numbers wrong. So there's money that ties to money when it's at the building level. So we just can't, you know, it's like the college dorm room of, you know, putting the toothpaste in the cinder block wall to cover over the hole, you know, thinking that you've solved the problem. Sooner or later, we're not going to be able to do that. And there is, there is a cost associated to the division in terms of, at the school level, what that turmoil brings. It's, there's an HR cost in that we haven't hired the right teachers because if you think you're hiring X number of teachers at elementary and there's a burgeoning, you know, that happens at seventh or eighth grade, there's a rinse, wash, repeat on money associated with that. So I don't, these numbers exist. They exist within the system. I don't, this is not difficult to pull. I can pull it. I just, that's not my job. And so I don't know that we necessarily need to wait until January until there's a trend analysis to understand, look, there's a 10-year trend here that's showing X, Y, and Z, or a five-year trend at least. We shouldn't have to wait for that because those numbers are inherently in the system. That's, my colleagues can decide not to, but we're in this position because we keep delaying this concept of having trend analysis and understanding the numbers at a more granular level about what's happening in a region, what's happening in a pyramid, you know, why one school and one pyramid is losing students and another's is increasing, and what that does to the HR and planning and who we put, how much we put into reserves, where we have a deficit in hiring. It all happens because that flex is happening at the building level.
All I would say is, I believe our metric, we've reported out for years, and we stand by the metric, and we've done overall a very good job. There's costs associated with being off. I think the question for the board, and again, I was not here, someone made a decision to do it, switch it to go after, we can switch it back. And that's the conversation we can have as a board and staff about what makes sense. Honestly, I see advantages to doing the membership and trend analysis before the final budget is done. But I'm sure there were intelligent reasons. I haven't picked up the phone to talk to my predecessor to ask why, and I haven't had a long discussion with staff about it. But again, that's what we get to do as a partnership and a team, what makes sense. And maybe what made sense two or three years ago, given all the recent announcements and other things that are going on, don't make sense now. I certainly want to do it in a way that supports board discussion and helps you guys get to a stronger decision for the community and the school system.
Okay. On a different matter, Ms. Burden, on your calendar of the things that need to change, can I ask, do you have a sense of the questions that come from the Board of Supervisors? Because I know they're allowed to ask questions of you. Is that a big percentage of your time? Is it a small, you know, is it, it doesn't, I don't want to know really on the number because it could be a fewer number and much more complex, but just, is there a sense that that is creating a burden?
Well, I, you know, arrived last March, so I was at the tail end of the fiscal 19 budget process. And my sense that, the questions from the Board of Supervisors is, they were all about salaries, for the most part, and that they mirrored many of the questions that you all answered, but slightly different so that we did indeed have to end up doing more research. But I wouldn't consider it to be burdensome, no.
Ms. Evans, followed by Mr. Moon.
Thank you. I wanted to delve a little bit deeper into the new staffing standard. Could you go through that again? Is there something in here that explains how, what the changes are?
No, there's not because, you know, that's part of the superintendent's proposed budget. But if you look in the back of any budget book, any budget document that we put forward, there are staffing standards. And the staffing standard for elementary schools says that you're, we're going to divide by 27.25 and that we're going to weight free and reduced kids based on a chart so that if you have more than 25%, then you weight them 0.3, and then it goes up from there. And it's very difficult to hit a 26 to 1 class size. So that requirement, I guess, is overlaid over top of the staffing standard so that what we did in the budget office is we would divide by 27.25, add in the needs-based staffing, and then once the spring got here, we would look at all of the class sizes, see who wasn't 26 to 1, and allocate staffing reserve to make sure that everybody was at 26 to 1. Now, most of your needs-based schools were already meeting that target or whatever their target was for K-3 initiative.
Well, hang on a minute. When you say everybody meeting 26 to 1, hopefully those with significant needs-based staffing are considerably lower than that. Isn't that the case?
Yes. Most of them are part of the K-3 initiative. And so, you know, they're, the ones at the highest levels of needs-based, you know, we want them to fall 19, 20, 21, 22, 23. But know that.
Including at 4 through 6? Or are we only considering the cap at K through?
Well, the state requires K through 3.
I understand that we have to follow state requirements. I'm talking about our desire to have schools with higher challenges have more resources and lower class sizes. I'm talking about our desire to have schools with higher challenges have more resources and lower class sizes. At, at all levels, at all.
Right. And the needs-based staffing is, took care of that as far as that weighting.
Okay. I guess that's where I'm heading with this. Because when we, we put a cap on class size, and, and I, I do support making sure that our classes don't go over a certain level, but it created some quirks. And in some cases, it resulted in some less challenged schools having as low, you know, very low class sizes because of the quirks that resulted in that. Have we changed the, have we kept or have we ended the practice of dealing separately with gen ed classes and AAP classes at the elementary level? I mean, I, I say this because, as, as my colleagues know, there was a case a couple of years ago when one elementary school got nine new teachers, not because they had a big influx of kids, but the quirks of how the, how, how they fell and, and the division between AAP classes and gen ed classes. So, they got two more at fourth grade and two more at fifth grade. Have we ended that?
Uh, no, that will still, I mean, with still a goal of below twenty-six, this, the change in the staffing standard is more about efficiency than anything else. That we don't want to allocate a couple hundred positions on the back end to hit twenty-six to one when we know that we want to hit twenty-six to one at the beginning. So, the, the free and reduced part and K-three initiative and all of that, of course, is still intact. But we're gonna hit the twenty-six to one on the, in the, in the superintendent's proposed budget document instead of at the end of the process.
Well, I would say I think we need to have a conversation about that because I don't see why we are dividing up the AAP and the gen ed kids at the same grade level in terms of providing more staffing, you know, and providing two, two more teachers just because they, they, they went one, one student up. So, I do think we need to have a conversation about that.
Well, and typically, you know, most divisions follow the Standards Equality or the SOQ staffing standard in that there is a ratio that is used to divide, but then there is a maximum class size. So that everybody might be looking for an average of twenty-six, but if somebody, if a class goes twenty-seven or twenty-eight, then that's perfectly all right. And I don't see that here, based on my understanding, that it's a hard twenty-six. And so, you may have, you know, situations like that where you have small groups, especially with subgroups, like a school within a school, like your AAP. And if you have small numbers, then if it goes over twenty-six, you're gonna have to add another teacher to meet that standard. I, I know what you're talking about.
And, right. And I, I think we need to have a conversation about that because this board has had a longstanding philosophy of wanting more resources to go to schools and with, with higher needs, with higher numbers of at-risk children. And I think we, we are flirting with inadvertently changing that if we don't think about the staffing standard and make sure that in doing this, we, we aren't shortchanging our, our high-need schools.
Mr. Moon followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders and then Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay, Ms. Burden, I think what you said toward the end of your presentation before we began Q and As, I find that you're very sombering, that, that you strongly feel that our budget planning process, you are just starting too late. Because as a long-term board member who's been doing this for many, many years, that you're coming in as a new assistant superintendent and seeing problems, wanna do it better. I wanna have that conversation, that discussion sometime. And I would like to ask a superintendent, you know, working with all those staff members to find the time to do that.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. McLaugh, uh, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then Ms. McLaughlin, and then Ms. Palczek.
Thank you. And I want to talk about two things. The first is a follow-up to Ms. Evans' comment regarding the needs-based staffing. And just to have a better understanding or clarification from you, Ms. Burden, that what you're planning on doing is actually building in front-end the needs-based staffing so that before we allocate excess staff, that we're going to address the needs of the needs-based staffing as part of our front-end formula. Is that correct?
Yes, but that's always been part of the front-end formula, that we would allocate needs-based staffing. We were just allocating anywhere from one hundred and fifty to two hundred positions on the back end to push the class size down to twenty-six to one where needed. So, I guess a simple way to put it is we were doing the macro analysis, including needs-based, on the front end, and then doing the micro analysis on the, on the back end and allocating that staffing reserve to push the numbers down to twenty-six where needed. And so, our staffing standard changes that so that we look at the micro level on the front end and push it to twenty-six there instead of all of that allocation on the back end.
So, you're gonna do the twenty-six and then allocate the needs-based before you actually present a budget?
Yes. I mean, the, the needs-based are built into the formula for the general ed classroom teachers. So, if you have a certain percentage of free and reduced, then twenty-six to one is not the number. It may be twenty-five to one, and then twenty-four, and then twenty-three, and then twenty-two.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that that is the front-end piece, which should address some of the questions that Ms. Evans has about overall class size. However, we do need to probably have a broader board discussion about two things as a result of your presentation today. One is, you know, the timing of how we actually approach our budgeting process and whether or not we need to maybe even be doing this earlier, preliminary conversations, structure it to, to chunk it to be, you know, initially enrollment trends and then implications on our budget, and then preliminary budget, and almost cyclical. So that if I look at your chart, what you're really asking for us is that we have provided our, all of our input and where we want to be on the budget essentially by February seventh, twenty nineteen. Because that would be when we adopt our advertised budget. And then, the tweaks would be only after we have feedback if we are granted less money than what we are asking for. But you don't want to see any surprises in the May timeframe of, oh, well, we want to add this little thing, and we want to add this little thing because we have time. Am I correct in understanding that?
You're correct. That would be ideal. But, you know, I'm a realist. I recognize that, you know, we probably won't get there in the first year. But, you know, it, it, just everybody being aware of the burden on staff and how, you know, what that means to continue the budget process well into July does prevent us from, you know, being able to plan better for the next fiscal year.
I would also say that it allows our board to focus on some of the other more challenging aspects of our, achieving our overall strategic objectives. So, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I just wanted to clarify that that's the date that you ideally would like to see us moving towards, is having more certainty by February. The second piece I wanted to address is on your page ten of your presentation. I, we're moving in the right direction. I'm feeling a little bit better. I don't think, you know, I think this is helpful that we're actually allocating future dollars towards our strategic plan. But I do want to remind our board and urge you that we need to be very deliberate and intentful, that we have to look at our existing budget in the context of our strategic plan. Because this is out of context. We don't actually talk about what are we already investing when we only look at future dollars. And I, I asked for this three years ago, as everybody knows on this board. This is an improvement, and I appreciate the improvement. But I do want to have a commitment from the superintendent that this is the last time we have a conversation about only looking at new dollars in the context of strategic planning. Because I cannot express certainty to my community that we are actually spending our money in, aligned with what our strategic priorities are when we only look at this as a forward-looking expenses. And so, as, I just want the support of this board to, and the superintendent, to honor a commitment which was made a number of years ago. And this is not about, you know, this is not a criticism of you, Ms. Burden. It really is that this doesn't give us context.
Let me, let me say two things. One, that's, that's the way we're headed. It's, you know, I've heard the board talk about promises made years ago. I'm here now. I'm making a promise that we're headed in this direction. I have a new CFO. She's moving in the right direction. It's just a lot. We're gonna get there. We're gonna get there. One nugget I want to tie something to in this very conversation. We need to give our staff time to do the work that the board really wants done, which is align this budget to the strategic plan and not doing constant, what you've heard from Ms. Burden, is the constant tinkering of the budget, month after month after month after month, so that the budget really isn't even, they're still working on. You heard her say, and I didn't even know this date. We're handing out the budget that we've approved in May. We're still making tinkering to it in September to finalize the documents. We can't run an organization of this size that way. And we've got to figure out how we create that. It's a back and forth between you all and us. What are the things you want? How do we get to what the board goals are and also recognize the, the staff work? Truthfully, right now, she has vacancies. People come in, they go, the workload's exhausting, and they get out. And it's very hard to find people with the financial skill set that we want. Part of it is the workload. So, I think we've got to keep thinking strategically about what are the board's strategic calls around finance and operations and the budget? Yeah, I, I'm not saying it isn't, right? And what are some things that we can do to create and free up staff time to do the analysis, to do that strategy that I think I hear the board wanting? And I look forward to the conversations. I think we're setting, setting the right approach for those conversations to happen.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I have two more board members to speak, and then I have one go back. And what I'm just going to announce now, I want a break at one o'clock. We, we are a little behind, but I think it's important that we have these conversations. So, when we look at BA lanes and substitute pay, I think we will start that after lunch instead of at one. We will try to wrap up this session by one and then come back for those last two sessions and break for lunch.
Ms. Derenak, Kofax, for planning purposes, can I suggest that as soon as we finish this discussion, we actually break for lunch, as you mentioned? And that we schedule our, our session on world languages. Let's plan on starting that at two fifteen.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. So, if we're efficient, we can have lunch before. Okay. So, we got two more, two more individuals, so we can probably break in the next ten minutes. And then, we will take thirty-minute break and come back at that point and finish the last portion of agenda item number one. Ms. McLaughlin.
So, before I ask my questions process-wise, if, from what Ms. Corbett Sanders just said, is that gonna give us forty-five minutes to do the BA lanes? Because we're, are we, we break close to one, then we'll come back at one thirty, and two fifteen, we do world languages? I, I'm just being honest, I think. Okay. I don't mind having a short lunch.
It's just tentative, tentative start time in frame.
Thank you, Mr. Moon.
So that you don't keep just that wait.
Oh, I totally agree. I was just gonna actually give the staff another fifteen minutes. I just know this board, and I know this topic, and I don't think we'll do it in forty-five minutes. So, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure we were all on there. Dr. Braybrand, as you were talking, you saw my mouth drop. So, I realized my poker face did not exist at all, which is why I smiled and covered my, my mouth drop.
It's okay. You're being honest, and I have an honest conversation around the table.
So, and, and that's what I think we enjoy, working with each other so much. What, what took me by surprise was the reference of tinkering with the budget every month. And I think you know, many of us talk all the time that when we want a caring culture, a caring culture is not just for our school-building employees and workload. It's also for our central offices. And so, as a board member who's finishing out her seventh year now, it's never been my understanding, nor the intent of this board, that we would be tinkering with the budget every month and increasing workload on staff. I do think that if we need to be better about how we plan as a board our work sessions on the budget, I would welcome that very much. I don't think we need to be doing it every single month. I think we should be thinking from a quarterly mindset and just have it be more intentional. I also do believe that when we talk about effectiveness, if you can be effective upfront, you can be far more effective down the road. So, if it's that we don't have sufficient staffing in our budget office to run one of the largest organizations in the Commonwealth of Virginia, let alone the tenth-largest school system, then we need to invest in that. There's no question about it. And I don't recall in seven years that this board's ever said, let's just cut staffing in the budget office. I, I, I don't know how decisions get made at the superintendent and leadership team level. I'm, this is now my fourth superintendent, when you count Steve Lockard, who was with us in the interim for the year. So, I would just say this at a macro level. If the budget office needs staffing in order to do this kind of work, then I hope you and LT will support that. The second thing is that I, I don't, again, believe that, that our board wants to tinker, but I think if we can get more guidance from you and the leadership team on what we can do with our inquiries that will be more reasonable, that would be helpful, too. I, I just, I think that's, that's a component of it, and certainly working with our budget chair and vice chair on that. I don't want us doing work for the sake of, it maybe helps board members or anyone feel like good intentioned, making us feel good. Let's just be effective, and if there's a better model for it, I, I completely support that. So, here's, here's my, my budget question, again, not to add to work. But when I look at slide ten, that's up, it just happens to say enrollment and demographic adjustments, it's approximately six million dollars. But didn't we just say that we're expecting to have a decline enrollment?
Yeah. But when we did the fiscal forecast in September, and then that didn't, I guess, we presented that to the board in October, and then those are the same numbers that were used for the November joint meeting. And obviously, we don't want to get out ahead of the school board. We know a different number now. But I'm not gonna reveal the superintendent's proposed budget here on this fine December tenth, Monday.
I got it. That absolutely makes sense. Yeah, because I just looked at that and thought, okay, now I'm, I'm getting confused all over again about the numbers. So, that makes perfect sense. What I do appreciate is you were trying to give us a snapshot of. These are the numbers we were working with since the fall. That plugging those in, this is what you would expect to see. And I just wanted to echo what Ms. Corbett Sanders said, which is that how it gets displayed, which I think this is great, but the more important piece of it is the, our board and working with you, Dr. Braybrand, and understanding what our existing funding is going into FY twenty and, and making sure then that we're all on the same page on, on how those dollars are gonna be allocated and where our priorities are going to be. So, and that, that way, I think it will help with, with the discussions that we'll have before the February vote when we send it on to the board supervisors.
Ms. Palczek?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it. And my colleague shared many of my comments. I just wanted to add a little bit to Ms. Evans' comments on the staffing priorities. I, I do know it was a concern, and, and some of the questions were exactly what you are trying to address, Lee. What I had heard- What I had heard from some of Dr. Nixon's predecessors as well is when we added the new priority with the class size, there was a, it seemed to be there was a little bit of confusion as how do we now address our other priorities, such as our needs-based staffing? And how do they work or not work together? So it does seem that that's one of perhaps those micro-level calculations that we need to make on the front end, and especially looking at the mobility. So that's a little bit of it when we're talking about, especially schools. And, you know, I have many of them where we know that the number in August, September is going to be lower from the past five-year history of their number come November, December, January. I think that's where it would be helpful if there's something we can do sooner to ensure that those schools will have staffing set aside. And I know from speaking to some of those principals, some of the concern was that, that they're receiving their HR numbers much lower than they know what they're going to need by the end of the year. And that it's, it's an additional challenge and burden on our high-poverty schools that see high mobility to not be able to staff those positions either at all or until much later in the school year. I know, you know, Luther Jackson had their boundary change last year, and I'm grateful that we were able to help them keep some of the staff because that was a last-minute change. So I don't know if there's something that we're able to do before a bigger revamp to say, let's see the schools where we know they're going to have a big change and they really are going to need to tap into the reserve so that that's calculated a little bit earlier to support the schools. Because it's hard for them to just get that staff later in the year. I, I don't know if Ms. Evans, if that, that's a little bit of what I was seeing around that number, if you feel that that addresses your concern. So that, that is a pretty large concern. And I don't know how you'll respond to that, if you're able to share a plan for that for next year, but that would be very helpful.
I've got some ideas, Lee, based on just listening to what Sandy and Dahlia said that I think may be able to help us based on how we did it or is my understanding of how we've done those numbers and maybe what we can do to have sort of a mobility component to when we do the staffing. We've always had a needs-based component. We looked at the mobility report, but how to change the staffing formulas, which is a big deal to the board. One thing I want you all to know from a principal point of view, for the first time with her leadership, every principal will get on their staffing what their actual needs-based staffing is, right? We've had it baked in the cake, but there's a little difference when you're a building leader back to thinking about the budget being aligned, even though you may not see all of it. Needs-based staffing is a big chunk. We're now going to really let each, at the operational level, schools know, this is how much your staffing is. What it also does is, are you using that staffing in support of needs-based? So it's an accountability tool as much as it is an efficiency tool for the budget. So we're, we're excited about that, and I applaud Lee and her team for making that move. It sounds really small, but it's actually pretty powerful.
Education and awareness for our principals, number one, right? And that hopefully will lead to more change in, in their management. I think that's great.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, no more questions. Let's do twenty-five minutes because I think our staff has to break and they have to eat, too. So one fifteen, we'll regroup.